Good evening and welcome to the March 18th, the County Board of Commissioners meeting. Thank you for being with us tonight. I'm going to call our meeting to order. Let's go ahead and have roll call, please.
Motion to excuse Commissioner White.
We have a motion to-
So I can use Commissioner White in a second.
What about Tom?
Maybe on his way.
So he may be on his way.
Okay, so that's your roll call.
Okay. And then we're going to have another vote for to excuse Commissioner White, is that correct?
Yes.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. If you would, please stand with me for the invocation by Commissioner McLawhorn.
Please bow with me in the world prayer. Eternal God will come first of all to thank you. We thank you for life, health, and strength. We ask now that you bless this meeting and have it be done in the way that you would have it to be done. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Okay, please remain standing. I'll invite Hayes Johnson from Rose High School up. Please introduce yourself and lead us in the pledge.
Good evening. I'm Hayes Johnson, a senior at J. H. Rose High School, and I'm currently Student Body Treasurer for the Student Government Association. Thank you for having me this evening at this time. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Hayes. Appreciate you coming out this evening. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda-
So move.
Motion in a second. Madam Manager, do we have any public addresses to the board?
You have no one signed up to speak.
Okay, we will move right into presentations. Our first one is the oath of office for our new county attorney, Matt Gibson, and Kimberly is going to handle that.
If you'd go down front and invite your family forward. Matt, if you would introduce your family before us again.
Sure, this is my wife, Laura Gibson. This is my oldest, Lennon Gibson, and my boy, Lawson Gibson.
Pleasure meeting you guys.
I, Matt Gibson, do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as county attorney.
I swear.
I, Matt Gibson, do solemnly swear that I will well and truly serve the state of North Carolina in the office of county attorney, and I will in the execution of my office endeavor to have all laws fairly and impartially administered so far as they may lie according to the best of my knowledge and abilities. Say hello, goodbye.
I swear.
Great.
Thank you.
And Kimberly, will you get in one also?
Get in one of them with him.
Yes. One with Kimberly and one without.
And then just do one with the family.
And then one just with the family.
Now smiling.
Matt, we're excited to have you on board.
Thank you so much.
Okay, our next presentation is the recognition of Eagle Scouts.
Yes, and if we could go down front on our way down before you go, Mr. Chairman, if there would have to be a motion to approve the scouts and the two proclamations before you go down.
Second. We've got a motion in a second for both of those. Do you want, please vote?
For the scouts, sure. First order of business will be to recognize the mission of our Eagle Scouts this year. The chairman and I will present those certificates, but I enjoy having Commissioner Alden McLawhorn down here, who he himself is also an Eagle Scout. Didn't know if you wanted to say any words, Commissioner McLawhorn, before we begin.
Oh, yeah, I wanted to certainly congratulate the recipients. John, well done. You know, this is the biggest and largest and the most prestigious award in scouting, and I am an Eagle Scout as well, so I certainly would like to readily follow you and give you one.
Okay, and we will call up first Drew Owens with Troop 200, and you're welcome to have your family come with you as well if you'd like. We know no one does these alone. Come right here to the center. You can stand on the black dot, and I didn't realize this is the child of one of our own. Okay, so fantastic. Congratulations, Drew. We present you this evening with a certificate of appreciation awarded to Drew Owens for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. For his project, he built benches for a time for science, and the certificate is presented by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners this 18th day of March, signed by Mark C. Smith, Chairman, Pitt County Board of Commissioners, and he will present it to you.
Drew, congratulations on behalf of the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
Want a picture? And then if John DuVose would come forward from Troop 46 with your family. Just incredible to have this number of Eagle Scouts with us this evening.
Come on up.
Forward, thank you so much. You can come right on up. It's my pleasure to present this certificate of appreciation to John DuVose for achieving Eagle Scout Award, and his project was that he refurbished benches on the Greenville Greenway, presented by the Board of Commissioners on this day and signed by the chairman. He will present it to you.
John, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Want a picture of them? Next, we have Ryan Mango from Troop 46 as well. He puts you right in the center. Fantastic. This certificate of appreciation is awarded to Ryan Mango for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. His project was to build a prayer labyrinth at St. James Methodist Church, issued this day by the chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Ryan, on behalf of Board of Commissioners, congratulations.
Thank you so much. Our last Eagle Scout we have is Connor Hall. Connor Hall from Troop 46 as well. Connor, thank you so much for being here. Want to come forward to you? Okay. Thank you. This certificate of appreciation is awarded to Connor Hall for achieving the Eagle Scout Award, and his project was to install bike racks at Wildwood Park, presented to you by Chairman Smith.
Connor, congratulations on behalf of the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
Another set of congratulations to all of these Eagle Scouts who make their families in this community proud for the work that they do, and we ask that they continue to stay the course and set the example for other Scouts as they come along the way. Thank you so much. Thank you, and we can stay down here. Commissioner McLawhorn, you can go back up, and we will ask Olivia Wallace from Chicag School to come forward. Is Olivia with us this evening? Wonderful, come forward. Thank you. Right here, do you have any family with you? Come on, nobody does it alone, right?
Maybe sisters in the house.
No, okay. Well, we are thrilled to have you with us this evening, Olivia, and we have for Olivia a certificate of appreciation awarded to Olivia Wallace for being selected as a winner in the 2023 NACO, which is the National Association of Counties' "I Love My County Because" art contest. And this is a contest that is put out every year by the National Association of Counties. We have gazillions of entries from all over the nation, and Olivia was the only winner from Pitt County this year, so we are extremely proud of you, wanted to recognize that achievement, and have the chairman present you with that.
On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, congratulations.
Thank you so much. Okay, next we have a proclamation recognizing National Social Work Month. If Sharon Michelle would come forward. And anyone else on her team that she's brought with her, please come forward. Social services work takes many, many hands.
That's right.
And sometimes it doesn't even feel like that makes it lighter. Yes, please come forward, and Sharon, would you introduce your team, or would you like them to introduce themselves once they get here?
Sure.
We didn't move on these proclamations. We did, okay.
Keesha Adams, Councilwoman, Director of County Services.
I'm Ashley Lee Gibson, Social Work Before, Designation.
Connie Anderson, I'm the Program Manager for CKS In-Home Services.
I'm Rhonda Olson, I'm the Program Manager for Permanent Sleep Later.
So I am thrilled that these dedicated and talented team of women are here with us this evening to accept a proclamation for Social Work Month, which is March 2024, and the theme is Empowering Social Workers. And let me tell you, they have been celebrating this month. Deservedly so. And this proclamation reads, whereas for more than a century, the social work profession has been dedicated to its primary mission, improving the well-being and helping meet the basic needs of all people, especially the most vulnerable. And whereas this year's Social Work Month theme, Empowering Social Workers, embodies the need for society to support social workers so they can continue to do life-upharming work and help address societal needs. And whereas social workers apply their research and legislative advocacy skill to transform community needs into national priorities. And whereas social workers know from experience that poverty and trauma can create lifelong social and economic disadvantages. And whereas social workers help people in every stage of life function better in their environments, improve their relationships with others, and solve personal and family problems. And whereas all children have the right to a safe environment and quality education. And whereas dignity and caregiving for older adults help define a nation's character. And whereas research shows that all people, no matter their circumstance, at some time in their life may need the expertise of a skilled social worker. And whereas social workers celebrate the courage, hope, and strength of the human spirit throughout their careers. Now therefore be it resolved, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim March 2024 as Social Work Month and commend its observance to all citizens, adopted this the 18th day of March 2024, signed by Chairman Mark Smith, attested by Kimberly Heinz, clerk to the board, to present it to Mr. Michelle.
Thank you all for your hard work and dedication on behalf of the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
All right, get close.
Thank you so much. Yes, you're so welcome. Thank you for the incredible work that you do. Next, we will have Wes Gray, Public Health Director, and any team members with him to come forward for a proclamation recognizing Public Health Week. Come on, folks, you can't do it alone. All right. I am thrilled to read a proclamation for the Public Health Department. And we have Wes Gray, our new, not new, so more, Public Health Director, and if we could introduce ourselves starting at this side.
Hi, I'm Kayla Watson, I'm in our end of the Health Department, I'm the prenatal coordinator.
Hi, I'm Kayla Manning, I'm the Nursing Supervisor.
I'm Allison Ford, I'm Education Division Director.
I'm Heidi Kinder, Nursing Supervisor.
Lee Cutler, Director of Nursing.
Heidi Twain, I'm the Medical.
Excellent. So to this wonderful group, I read a proclamation recognizing Public Health Week, which will be April 1st through 7th, 2024, with lots of incredible things planned during the week for that department, and it reads, whereas public health measures to control and eliminate infectious diseases, improve environmental sanitation, and promote healthy lifestyle practices that have been the greatest cause of improved health status and increased life expectancy for the residents of our county and all of North Carolina's residents over the last 100 years. And whereas Pitt County Public Health workforce is a critical component to our emergency response to natural and man-made disasters and widespread disease outbreaks in our county. And whereas our county and state public health workers have been courageous, inventive, and tireless in their work to protect our residents from threats during the recent COVID-19 pandemic while continuing to perform their other essential public health functions, oftentimes at the risk of their own safety and health. And whereas public health plays a critical role in advancing health equity, care management, and preventing chronic disease and injuries resulting in improved productivity and decreased healthcare costs for all North Carolinians. And whereas the Pitt County Board of Commissioners is committed to a continued emphasis on the prevention in public health and to helping our county reach a better state of health through actions outlined in the Healthy North Carolina 2030 objectives and Pitt County Community Health Improvement Plan. And whereas communities, local health departments, employers, hospitals, and healthcare providers, individuals and families, insurers, county leaders, policy makers, faith-based communities, schools, and childcare facilities must work together to identify and develop innovative solutions to health problems facing the people of Pitt County. And whereas the Pitt County Board of Commissioners encourages all residents to recognize that public health is working to ensure that all residents are protected from threats from communicable diseases, foodborne illnesses, injury, malnutrition, and chronic diseases such as diabetes, heart disease, and cancer. Whereas April 1st through 7th, 2024 has been designated as National Public Health Week, now therefore be it resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 1 through 7, 2024 be designated as Public Health Week in Pitt County and commend its observance to all county residents and convey our deepest gratitude to those public health professionals who serve our county every day. Adopted this 18th day of March 2024, signed by the chairman, Mark C. Smith, and attested by Kimberly Heinz, clerk to the board to prove that to show our director best of kindness.
On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, thank you all for your hard work and dedication. Yes, sir.
This follows an incredible loss-cutting of the new Pitt County Dental Services Unit, which was absolutely incredible today. We could scoot in for a picture? Thank you all so very much. Kayla Manning would stay up here while the rest of them sit down. We have an additional special recognition and our last recognition of the afternoon for our Employee of the Month, Kayla Manning. And I, I'm going to do it from my head and not my notes, but not on the other table. The Employee of the Month program was started in March of 2022 in order to recognize exemplary performance of our county employees, celebrating one another who are recognized by their peers for acting and serving as a model for other employees, for going the extra mile the whole while. And for that, each month, county employees select county employees to be recognized as the Employee of the Month. This month, it is my absolute pleasure to recognize Kayla Manning with public health, a public health nursing supervisor too, in recognition of her dedication and exemplary service to Pitt County government and the citizens that we serve. And in particular, not only did her nominator talk about her as being a team player, compassionate, supportive, I'm remembering all of this because it was an incredible nomination, they also highlighted your work on the back-to-school immunization clinic, which was a tremendous success and helped our students get back to school, and so much work went into that, and you aced it for this community. And so for that, we present you with this certificate, and inside is the receipt of a $100 check to thank you for your service to Pitt County government.
Congratulations, Kayla, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. Thank you for your hard work.
All right, thank you so much. That'll do it.
Okay, we will move on to public hearings, and Sam, you're up.
Good evening, Chairman Smith, Board of Commissioners, and Manager Gallagher. Tonight, the board will conduct a public hearing for the issuance of limited obligation bonds, a finding resolution, and a local government commission application for the Pitt Community College welding building. On December 18th, 2023, the board authorized staff to explore using limited obligation bonds to finance the new welding building for Pitt Community College. Staff has been working with our financial advisor and bond counsel to prepare for the issuance of an amount not to exceed $17 million, and we are expecting to use Article 46 sales tax revenues for the debt payments. After the public hearing, I am requesting the board to adopt the finding resolution as attached in your board packet. Authorize the county manager and the deputy county manager, CFO, to submit the application to the local government commission for approval of the financial arrangement, and allow staff to continue to work with all relevant parties in the execution of the necessary documents related to the financial agreement. Mr. Chair, we are ready for the public hearing unless anyone has any questions.
Okay, Matt, do you need to go through our regulations for that?
Is there anyone that has signed up for the public hearing?
Anyone signed?
There is, if you, once declared open, there is no one signed up to speak.
Okay, so we'll open up the public hearing, but no one's declared to speak.
So I don't need to state that?
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. It's a pleasure to board.
Move for adoption.
Second. Now, motion in a second. And vote, please. Okay, thank you. We will move on to our next public hearing, Pitt Solar, Jonas.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Tonight, we have one rezoning request before you. It is for the Pitt Solar rezoning. This request is to rezone approximately 133 acres of property owned by Christopher James. It's located off of Waddy Carson Road, north of its intersection with NC 30. If you look at the screen, you can see general map showing the site location. It's just to the east of Bethel. You may remember this site. It's been before this board several times throughout the last few years. In September of 2020, the site was issued a conditional use permit. That permit has expired several times since then, and they've had to come back before this board to renew that permit. This is not a part of that process, but a new addition to that rezoning request, or to that site. The total size of the solar farm that was previously approved was 942 acres, of which 317 acres were actually located in the county's jurisdiction. Here's a map showing the overall site so far, what has been zoned for that solar farm. In the blue, that's Bethel. The town of Bethel is responsible for that. The red hatched area is the county's jurisdiction. The site that is coming before you tonight is for the 133 acres shown here in yellow. And again, this site is outside of the town of Bethel. There is a little bit of blue associated with this site that is also in the town of Bethel, as you can see. That will need to be approved by the town of Bethel, not the county. The construction of the solar farm has been delayed as a whole due to Duke Energy, Duke Progress Energy, making repairs to rebuild or making, doing construction to rebuild the service line connecting to this site. The site is shown here in yellow with the existing land uses shown. You can see in this area of the county is very rural. There are a few home sites or residential sites in this area, but for the most part it's agricultural. The envisioned Pitt County 2045 Future Land Use Plan designates this as agriculture. That designation includes farmlands, forestry, low-density residential and commercial and institutional uses. The zoning map is currently zoned rural agricultural, and that district is intended to accommodate, again, low-density residential uses associated with the public and institutional uses. A conditional zoning district allows for the approval of a specific use. In this case, it would be for that solar farm. The zoning ordinance does have certain standards outlined for solar energy facilities. Those include minimum setbacks from the property line for both the solar panels themselves as well as the inverters associated with that. Maximum height of all equipment will be less than 25 feet, and it does require a site plan to be submitted along with the drawings of the components and lease agreements and solar easements. Also, it needs to include the evidence of a utility connection or interconnection and the decommissioning plan with a cost estimate associated with that. Must mean all building codes, all electrical services must be underground, and signage with emergency contact. So this is a view of the site plan I'll run through real quick. Again, that's Bethel's ETJ, the previous solar farm, and then the area we're looking at tonight. Zoom in a little bit. The solar panels will not take up the entire area that is to be rezoned. They will only be located in this yellow portion of the site plan. Inverters will be located with that 150-foot setback, and then there is some existing vegetation that will be utilized for the screening and buffering, as well as a vegetative buffer that will be installed by the developers. Planning staff finds that this request is consistent with the envisioned 2045 Conference of Land Use Plan, and we find that it's reasonable and in the public's best interest. This went before the planning board at its February meeting and was recommended unanimously for approval. So with that, the motions is to adopt a consistency statement as well as to approve the request for the rezoning. as well as to approve the request for the rezoning. Some additional conditions. No zoning compliance permit will be issued until a site plan is received that meets the standards. And also, they must obtain a driveway permit from the Department of Transportation. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll open the public hearing.
Any questions for Jonas?
Yes.
Are there any residents in that area that has any concern about this?
Not that we've heard from. Again, this is a very rural area. The majority of landowners own the land surrounding this solar farm, and a good majority of the property owners that we notified were associated with the previous rezoning for the solar farm. So we have not heard from anyone outside.
Okay, thank you.
Any other Commissioner questions? Okay, we will open up the public hearing. Madam Manager, anybody signed up?
There is no one signed up to speak.
Okay.
There's somebody.
Got one?
Do you want to go ahead and speak?
Okay, sure. Come on up and introduce yourself, please.
Mr. Chair, if I may read the...
Yes, sir.
With this public hearing now open, Pitt County welcomes all comments on the Pitt Solar conditional rezoning request. Please state your name, address, and the name of any organization that you may be representing. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak.
Does this clicker work or does it spacebar? Good evening, my name is Jason Hathcock. I'm with Sun Energy One. Address 6750 NC Highway 30 East in Bethel. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the Board, and those guests in attendance. We thank you for your time this evening. My name is Jason Hathcock. I'm the Development Director for Sun Energy One. We've got a great team here with us this evening to answer any questions you might have about the project. With me tonight is Cody Janice, Derek Ivey, and Charles Brock. I'd like to thank everyone with Pitt County for the time and work you've put into making this project a collaborative effort. The guidance we received from various stakeholders allowed us to design the site in a way to limit impacts to the adjacent properties while maximizing benefits to Pitt County as well as the electrical grid. For most of the people in this room, this project will be familiar. We received a CUP previously, and we're now requesting to add one additional parcel to the project. I prepared a brief overview of our company, the project, and the permitting process. Sun Energy One was started in 2009. It's a family-owned, founder-owned business. We're headquartered in Stamford, Connecticut, with a regional office in Pitt County, just south of Bethel. To date, we've constructed over 60 solar projects and have a strong presence in North Carolina. When entering into new communities with a proposal for a new solar energy project, we make certain that we engage with the community to include landowners, neighbors, local officials, and local business owners. We know that communities will have questions about our projects, and we aim to engage with them to answer questions, to discuss their concerns and any questions they may have. I'd like to take this time to go over the project itself. Pitt Solar is submitting a rezoning application to Pitt County for the 151-acre parcel number 03756, located at 3865 Waddy Carson Road. The solar facility will be 150 megawatts in total, once in service, and will be able to provide energy to power thousands of homes. The project's to be located within the town of Bethel and Pitt County, north of NC 30, along Big Oak Road. Pitt Solar will comply with Pitt County zoning requirements, local building codes, North Carolina Utility Commission's rules and regulations, stormwater and erosion control standards, and FERC regulations to ensure a safe and viable development for Pitt County and its residents. On behalf of Sun Energy One and Pitt Solar, I'd like to thank you all again for taking the time to consider our request for rezoning, and we're available this evening for any questions you might have. I'll provide my contact information on the last slide here so you can follow up if you have any questions in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions from the Commissioners for Jason? Okay. Anyone else I would like to speak? Okay, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we adopt the recommended...
Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. Can we have a motion to adopt? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, if you would, please vote.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the second motion to approve the request to resume.
Have a motion to resume?
Seconded.
And a second, please vote. Okay, great, thank you. We will move on to items for report, the monthly financial report, Sandra.
Good evening again, Chairman Smith, Commissioners, Madam Manager. Tonight, I bring you the February 2024 Financial Report for the General Fund, Solid Waste Fund, and the EMS Fund. We are eight months into the fiscal year, or 66.7% of the year. For the General Fund, we have collected 72.6% of anticipated revenues and spent 60.1% of budgeted expenditures. Solid Waste, we have collected 84.1% and spent 53.7%. EMS, we have collected 84.6% and spent 65.4%. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. If not, it's my recommendation for a motion to approve the monthly financial report as presented.
So move.
Seconded.
Thank you, Sam. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Great, thank you, Sam. Russell, you're up next with the February 24 Tax Collection Report.
Good evening, Chairman Smith, Commissioners, and Manager Gallagher. This evening, I bring to you the February 2024 Collection Report. The Pitt County fiscal year to date, July 1, 2023, through February 29, 2024, combined collection rate for real and personal property was 97.85%. The combined collection rate one year ago for real and personal property was 97... I'm sorry, yes, 97.59%. Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes using the necessary remedies available through the North Carolina general statutes. If there are no questions, it's my recommendation to approve the February 2024 Collection Report as presented.
You want to take a motion for that?
Seconded.
A motion and a second. Thank you, Russell, appreciate that. And we will move on. Madam Manager, you are up next.
Great, I have a few items to report for you this evening. Your next meeting date's April 15, and then May 6, at 6 o'clock in this room. Also, a reminder to let the clerk know if you are able to attend the Mideast Commission Annual Meeting, which will take place on April 18 at 6:30 PM at the Roanoke Country Club in Williamson. It will be their annual meeting where they will highlight their accomplishments, opportunities, and items of interest to the Board with regard to Mideast Commission. Item C is just an update on the farmer's market. I am thrilled to share that we had a very successful vendors' meeting on March 12, and a successful opening day at the farmer's market. And you can look at your screen for some graphics related to that day. But on the first day of the market, we had 28 vendors. We had Public Health doing a food demonstration with some broccoli Mandarin salad. There was a kids' corner with little ones coloring and spending time there, enjoying the community feel of the market. And so it was a very, very successful opening day. I also wanted to share some of the ways that we have addressed some feedback about the market that I'm thrilled to share, particularly with regard to the 2024 season ad campaign, which began last Sunday, March 10, with radio commercials, digital advertising. We will do digital marketing with over 465,000 different ads being targeted and displayed by video. We have a robust farmer's market Facebook page. We're providing advertisements on witn.com and the Stay Connected ad in the newspaper, in addition to radio ads, and we've had several press releases. I'm also excited about a new vendor portal through the website so we can have regular and consistent and frequent communication with all of the vendors at the market. That was another request that they had. And so far, I believe everything has gone very smoothly. So that is a positive update. The market continues to operate on Saturdays from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Come early for your fresh produce or crafts or baked goods items, and I think it will not disappoint you. So I'm pleased with our first opening day. The next question's on the farmer's market?
Pretty pictures.
Yes, it was a pretty market. It really was. It was bright. And if you walk through the market, one of the things that impressed me the most was the light that now comes in from the renovation. It was spotlessly clean, thanks to our Buildings and Grounds crew. The skylights were bright, and it wasn't even an overly bright day. Brand-new white tables in each vendor area so that they could display their goods and an ability to walk around freely with clear marked lines on the ground. It was a very, very nice market on Saturday, and I expect that to continue. So hats off to Jonas Hill, PJ Andrews, Hannah Smith, and Larita Johnson, who are our farmer's market team. Next item is National County Government Month. As many of you know, every April, the National Association of Counties encourages us to celebrate National County Government Month. It's an annual celebration that's been going on since 1991, and NACO is encouraging counties during this month to actively promote county roles and responsibilities in serving our residents. And we can schedule activities throughout the month. This year, we had a wonderful brainstorming session with senior leadership team and our public information officer, and we have a great lineup of National County Government Month events to push forward. We're going to start with a press release that explains the month and how we are aligning with the three pillars of President Mary Jo Maguire's Forward Together platform. And those three pillars are to connect, how county government connects, focusing on building bridges to advance excellence and networks in county government; how counties inspire, focused on driving community engagement and residents' trust in county government; and how we lead, focused on spearheading local, state, federal, and intergovernmental partnerships and common sense policy. So for the month of April, you will see us spotlight Pitt County's role in making life better for every single resident in Pitt County and contributing to those intergovernmental partnerships. You'll see a newsprint ad. You'll see digital marketing efforts with targeted ads on pitcountync.gov and reflector.com. You'll see social media events, custom graphics. And one of the things I'm really excited about is so... is the first week, we'll have our press release. Then we will have 45-second to one-minute spots. One will be an interview with Pitt Area Transit. One will be an interview with 911 with regard to the county leading in our communications efforts. And then we have a third one. Tim Corley is going to talk about recreation and how we inspire through community engagement. Thank you. So those videos will come out in the middle of the month, on April 15. You'll see us present a proclamation for National County Government Month, and that will kind of be the spotlight in the middle of those efforts. So I'm really excited about how we can highlight National County Government Month. We have not done anything for National County Government Month since our All-American County Award several years ago. So excited to get this up and started. And in future years, we anticipate weaving in a job fair, county government job fair in the month of April going forward as well so we can actually get out there and highlight available careers within Pitt County Government. So that will be in the month of April. Last thing I have on your printed agenda is a broadband update, and this is exciting in terms of the fact that we are moving forward. As you know, the county has already received a great grant one to serve unserved and underserved homes in Pitt County with internet service. And that was by Bright... awarded to Brightspeed. We received great grant two, which was awarded to Charter. And then you may recall, we keep talking about CAB, which is continuing access to broadband. And that's the next phase of grant funding. In your American Rescue Plan funds, this Board set aside $4 million to maximize a grant for close to a $12 million project. We were, through the diligence of Mike Taylor and our public... in our Management Information Systems Department, been on the ball with the state offices, in particular, with the Broadband Infrastructure Office, Division of Broadband and Digital Equity within the North Carolina Department of Information and Technology. We have regular communication with them, and we are in the very first round of CAB grant scopes of work to be released. So by tomorrow, we have to finalize our scope of work for the remaining unserved and underserved households in Pitt County. You will see that potentially by the end of the week. Pushed out by the state of North Carolina, they take the lead in the CAB grant process. There'll be about a 45-day process to get responses back and reviewed by the state and our internal team to review them. And then an award will be made so that additional homes, a significant number of additional homes, should be able to serve, be served in a project where we maximize our financial contribution. There'll be a similar-sized contribution by the internet service providers, who are awarded this work, and then the grant funds to come in to finish out that total cost of the project. So we look forward to bringing back a recommendation for award in about 45 days from release of this scope of work, and the work will need to be completed by October of 2025. So that's pretty exciting. We're getting towards the tail end of this work, and I know we've talked a lot about the work that's been awarded. And now we're hopeful that you'll begin to see that work be put in the ground. And it all has to be completed by December 2026. So that's the update on broadband. And if you will allow, Mr. Chairman, I have one other thing to add on that I thought was important that didn't make my manager's list, but it is date-sensitive, and that's the Department of Social Services Low Income Energy Assistance Program. We call that LEAP. The deadline for LEAP applications is March 28. So the end of this month is the last date. For those who don't know, LEAP is a program that provides one-time vendor payment for eligible families who need assistance with home heating expenses. Program details are available on the county website, and folks can apply in person or online. But if you are applying for LEAP benefits and watching this, just a reminder that your deadline is to get that application in by Thursday, March 28. And that's all that I have.
Okay, thank you, Madam Manager. A lot of good stuff there. I want to take a second and recognize Scott Howard. I see you're here tonight. He's the Town Manager of Aiden, and I have the pleasure of working with him on the CMSD Board. Thank you for being with us tonight. Do I hear a motion for our items for consent?
So move.
You got a motion here, a second?
Second.
If you would, vote on that, please. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to items for decision. Pitt County Comprehensive Transportation Plan, Jonas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we come before you for consideration of adoption for the comprehensive transportation plan for Pitt County. Planning staff has been working on this for a good amount of time in cooperation with the Department of Transportation, the Greenville Urban Area MPO, as well as the Mideast RPO. So a lot of different partners in this plan, a lot of long hours spent discussing it. What is a comprehensive transportation plan? It's a long-range plan, planning document that will assist us in making decisions based on transportation needs over the next 25 to 30 years. It is required by North Carolina general statute to have a transportation plan for every county. And previously, we've had two different transportation plans dated back in 1993 with our initial transportation plan for the county. We had an update in 2005, and this is the next update before you tonight. We formed a steering committee. That committee was formed back in September of 2020, so a good four years, or not quite four years, just four years in the making. four years, just four years in the making. That committee consisted of representatives from the county, all the 10 municipalities, as well as NC DOT and local leaders within the transportation community. We met a total of 22 times and discussed the plan. We sought a good amount of public input towards this plan. We conducted a survey in 2021 and had a response of over 1,800 participants. We held two workshops in 2022. One of those was held at the District Park. The second one was held at North Pitt High School. So good turnout for that, got a lot of good input from the public. And we also held a virtual session for those who could not make it out to those in-person sessions. So far, we have gotten a steering committee vote, 18 to 1, to recommend endorsement of the plan. In March, last week, March 13th, the Greenville MPO TCC voted to recommend adoption and endorsement of the plan to the TAC next week for the MPO. And also last week, the Mid East RPO has endorsed this plan. Tonight, we're here before you for hopefully adoption and endorsement of the plan as well. And the TAC for the Greenville Urban Area MPO will meet to vote on it formally on the 27th of March. All the other municipalities, we will do a circuit tour for the other municipalities and get their endorsement as well. Once we have their endorsement, the plan will go before the Department of Transportation or the Board for adoption by them. So with that, I'd like to introduce Phil Gehry with the Department of Transportation. Phil's been instrumental in helping us, guiding us along this long process of getting to tonight. So he's going to go through the plan itself, different components, and share a couple of highlights for Pitt County. So Phil?
Thanks, Jonas, and thanks, y'all, for having me. Jonas hit on a lot of the highlights I'm going to talk about. I'm Phil Gehry. I'm with NC DOT's Planning Division. I'm an engineer with them. There's like 15 of us or so, and this is our main product. We just go around the state and knock out a bunch of CTPs, Comprehensive Transportation Plans, as we call it. And we're going to go over this one. This goes all the way to the year 2045. Like Jonas said, this is our goal, hopefully with your help, to adopt it. What is it? Jonas hit on that as well. This is basically a long-range, needs-based plan, all the way to the year 2045. A lot of people won't be alive to see some of this get built, or any of it built, but that quote there, as the Greek proverb says, "A society grows great when old men and women plant trees whose shade they know they shall never sit in." It's a consensus on a future transportation system, so we do go over all those modes there that you see, highway, bike and ped, and public transit and rail. It's the first step in the project development, and it is a balancing act, getting through from idea to reality. It takes a lot of teamwork and resources and money and a lot of experts figuring it This is an infographic of that balancing act. So we're at the top there. Just getting the needs, that's the first thing. They're very vague right now. There's no alignments or recommendations specifically putting it anywhere, but we do want to identify the needs. There is no fiscal restraint to this plan. There's no money attached to any of this until step two. So step two is where money gets attached. We're comparing your needs to the whole state's needs. I think we fund like less than 5% of the needs in the state, because that's how much money we have. How we figure out how to pay for those needs is based on the most needed needs, and we figure that out based on traffic, benefit cost, freight. A lot of the money goes to the most trafficked areas. Step three, we figure out the environmental impacts. Once it's funded, and then we design it, buy the land, move the utilities out of the way, build it, and then we finally have to maintain it. Yeah, it's state law. Like Jonas said, that's why we do it. That's why I have a job, so thanks to legislature. Lot of benefits besides following the law. First one, we already went over, solutions to transportation deficiencies. We do integrate land use with transportation to make sure those work together. We look at all the modes. Like I said, there is a public involvement process, so it's nice to get the public's take early on. Even though, once it's funded and designed, there will be a whole lot more public involvement, but it's good to get it as early as possible. Consider the environment. I said that this document does provide a lot of good information as they are funded and developed. And the big help to MPOs and RPOs is it's nice to see the list of needs you have. Like, if you have a house, you have this big list of all the things you want to fix, and it helps you figure out where you want to put your resources and fix first. The cost, like I said, it's free, except for your taxes and everyone's time. That helped Pitt County, again, instrumental as well. Couldn't have done it without Ben, James, and Jonas, and Sam with the RPO as well. He's helped a lot with that, and really appreciate their help. This is a bunch of local experts we asked. I think we had about 50 people or so. With us based in Raleigh, it's better to get the locals' take, because we don't know the area as well as them. As well as the public, and it was great turnout. Again, thanks to Pitt County's advertising and all the outreach. We got 1,800 survey respondents, which is a lot for us in comparison to other CTPs, 4,100 survey comments. Great turnout, lot of interest in the CTP, so we appreciate it. Pretty much comments just wanting more of everything, as we all want, more sidewalks, more bike lanes, more roadways. But also, that works with the residential development, like that first comment says, for example. Slide's a little off, but you can see there's 250 total recommendations by the end of this analysis and all the public feedback. Just to hit on some of the highlights, so the upper right has bike and ped recommendations, the East Coast Greenway improvements. NC Bike Route 2 goes through the county, so we want to improve that, because right now it's pretty sparse on the accommodations. And then the bottom is the roadways. So you have the bypass, which, again, isn't in alignment. It's just in a vague identification up there. There is a lot of traffic in Greenville, and we'd like to, maybe in 30 years, eventually fund, you know, complete the ring. You see a bunch of cities, they have half a ring, and eventually it gets so crowded you want to complete the loop and just have a nice ring road, so you don't have to drive downtown to get outside of it. It's easier to go around. And the second two there, US 13 and NC 11, we want to upgrade to freeway standards, so north to Bethel and south to Grifton. That's just truing up the strategic transportation corridors. So we have 25 in the state, and they look at the highest priority quarters. So this is one of the 25 highest priorities for the state, and we're basically just truing that up with that study. Those strategic transportation corridors are important for economic development and mobility, commerce, defense with all the military bases, Seymour and Cherry Point. So yeah, that's just incorporating that. We look at a lot of local plans, just to make sure we're not contradicting it, make sure we're consistent. This is a picture of the report and a vision there with the URL as well. The vision, pretty, pretty consistent along the state. Everyone wants safe, accessible, resilient, efficient. Great adjectives that we like to try to incorporate into the CTP. This is the highway maps. So on the left, the highway recommendations are split into two maps. On the left, it's the future facility type. So like I said, freeways north and south of here are in red, for example. So there's, you know, exit ramps, not stoplights. And then on the right are the specific recommendations, and those are all split up by need, like congestion or access management, modernization, safety needs, economic development. And let's see, I think that covers that one. And then these are just the other modes, bike and ped. There's a lot there, just a bunch of spaghetti there, but that's where we want to improve the bike accommodations and the sidewalks. And then the public transit and rail is actually just the existing, the rail lines that go through and the bus system y'all have. And then it's also split up with the list of recommendations and words. So you got the title of the facility, the limits, the description, how long it is, and all of that. Try to get into one summary. The references there as well, that's just for that. And like Jonas said, we'd like to eventually adopt this. Nothing is set in stone. We do come around to update it, and yeah, this is our anticipated schedule, to at least go before them for the first time. So thank y'all for your time. I really appreciate it.
Is that something you're going to share with us?
Does the QR code have this information or this information in it?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it'll be, it's basically just the report. It's like 60 pages, I think, if you want to look at each recommendation and...
But that's all on the QR code?
Yeah.
Well, I thought you were going to give us one of the books.
And there's sort of copy available in the clerk's office as well.
Any questions for Phil? Thank you for coming out and talking to us this evening.
Oh, yeah.
Entertainer motion?
So move.
Second.
Jonas, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we going to get that timetable date that you mentioned at first about where you're going to go all around the county?
Yes, as far as other municipalities.
So that the people who not, they not been, they will have an opportunity to know ahead of time?
Yes, yes, ma'am. I can get you a schedule if we will be.
What was the motion?
To adopt the plan.
To adopt the plan.
I was talking.
Okay. Motion approved. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Next up is EMS third-party billing. Randy Gentry.
And your next three items are sequential. They really go in order and all relate to emergency management. So we have Randy and Sam on the first one.
Good evening, Chairman Smith, Commissioners, and Manager Gallagher. I'm here to request to enter into a contract for EMS billing. During our budget presentation, preparation for 2024 and 25, emergency management, along with finance, discussed how we might increase or improve EMS billing. And one of the ways we discussed was using a third-party service, because these services are experts in the field and keep up with the ever-changing rules and regulations regarding insurance billing, as well as Medicaid and Medicare. During this process, we interviewed three different companies, two of which that are based in North Carolina and currently bill for North Carolina Counties and agencies. After meeting with the three, it was determined that Collington Billing Incorporated offered Pitt County the best rate and was the best fit for Pitt County. The fee for this service is 4.25% of net collections and an $11 flat fee for Medicaid transports, and the estimated annual cost is similar to our current cost of billing and collections. Collington Billing will continue to follow Pitt County collection practices, and it is estimated that our collections could increase by an estimated $750,000 or more. This is the current footprint for Collington Billings, and you can see it's heavily populated by eastern North Carolina counties, similar to ours, and we think that'll be a good fit for Pitt County. And finance and emergency management recommend the motion of approve and authorize the county manager to execute the contract with Tarrio Medical Billings. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Questions? Motioners?
Have we used this group before, or is this a new group total? Have we used?
This is a brand-new group. We currently perform the service in-house.
In-house.
We have not used them before.
Entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for approval and authorization.
And I second it.
Got a motion and a second for the vote? Okay, we'll move on to the next one, Randy.
Thank you. And for this one, Mike Taylor is available if there are any additional questions as well.
Tonight, I'm requesting additional EMS personnel to assume operational responsibility for a current contracted squad that has requested to end its contract for service on June 30, 2024. Aiden EMS has submitted in writing from its chief and board president its intent not to renew its contract for 2024 and 25, and we are requesting eight new positions to staff the Aiden Station starting July 1st, 2024. But to provide this service, we are asking that the Board approve eight positions tonight, so we'll have time to begin to advertise and recruit and get people on board, bringing them on no sooner than May 1st. So we'll have two full months to get people hired, trained, and ready for service on July 1st. Salary reserve in this year's budget will cover the cost of approximately $84,900 for the remainder of the fiscal year. And my recommended motion is that you approve the request and authorize eight additional paramedic positions in the EMS division with recruitment beginning in April 2024 for the implementation between the May and June 2024 to be ready for July 1st.
It's a pleasure, the Board. Got a motion and a second. Okay, unanimous?
And the last one, Mr. Chairman, if I could present with Randy's assistance. This is a request to reclassify the positions as listed on page 154 in your agenda package. After consultation with emergency management, human resources, financial services, and leadership team, we have discussed the current market, and in order to achieve equity and stay competitive, it's our recommendation that we reclassify these positions as listed in your agenda package. We'd ask that that change become effective with the pay period that begins May 12th, so that the positions that you've just advertised could be advertised at the reclassified rate. The annualized cost for the salary and benefits for this adjustment is about $293,000, which would be covered by the EMS fund, and about $70,945 from emergency management, and that's the fully loaded cost. The portion to be covered for the remainder of this fiscal year is about $26,000 from the EMS fund and about $6,400 from emergency management, and those are covered within your existing budget in salary reserve, which are salaries that were budgeted for this year but not fully expended. And so there's no budget amendment that would be necessary. We can do these within existing budgeted revenues. It's my recommendation that you approve these reclassifications effective May 12th and that we implement them in accordance with Section 43 of our Personnel Ordinance.
Any questions? Do we have a motion to approve? I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, great. We will move on with Commissioner comments. I will start to my right with Commissioner Wolf.
No comments.
Commissioner Holman. Commissioner Nunley.
Briefly, I've received a number of citizen calls and communication, I'm sure a lot of us have, regarding the Pitt County tax revaluation properties. I just want to reiterate, and we've pushed this out before, but just want to reiterate that the appraisals, that the reappraisal is a, is really a technical process. It's based on market conditions. It's legally bound. It does not indicate what your taxes will be next year. That will come through our budgetary process. So hold tight. And, and, but that, but when you get those bills, that's, that's the value, that's the value. that's the value that pops in when it's run by our staff, but it is not set by anyone, but it's set by the market. So, please hold tight, and ultimately, what your avalor of tax will be will be decided through our process, through the budgetary process. So, just wanted to keep pushing that out and keep spreading the word. Don't freak out.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Floyd Higgins?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Do have a couple of comments. Want to also say how proud we are, or should be, in the new dental unit, mobile dental unit. It will move about the county at the schools and people, you know, who have a problem with transportation. This will be an opportunity to receive dental care to children, you know, especially. So, we are very proud to have a new one. I'm over you, but this is the second one, but this is a new one. And we got opportunity to tour it today. And of course, West South Health Director and Dr. Garrison, Chair of the Board of Health, talked about the importance of oral health. So, I just want to reiterate that. Also, I attended the reopening of the farmer's market. And as the manager said, it was nice, well, you know, lighting of it, it just cleaned, and I believe, and as I talked with staff, it was well-attended for the first opening. My other comment is about, I'm still waiting for us, Pitt County, to join NACO in recognizing our students who participate in the art contest, art competition, rather, with some kind of recognition, monetary or whatever, because what we present all comes from NACO. So, we don't have any skin in the game other than presenting NACO's award to our students. So, I'm still waiting for that to happen. You probably don't know what I'm talking about, but the rest of the Commissioners do know what I'm talking about, the ones who've been here before, so.
I think we talked about it last year, about compensating the state.
Yes, yeah, compensating, yes. So, something that we, as county, can do to recognize those students. So, still waiting on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Floyd Higgins. Commissioner McGlohorne?
Thank you, Chairman. Smith, Russell is here, and I want to piggyback on what Commissioner Nunley brought up about the average tax rate. Maybe a brief explanation, Russell, in terms of what the rate and the avalor and tax rate and the rate of the... You talked about it last time, the evaluation of the property, and maybe just briefly, the appeal procedure, so that they can hear it again, and briefly, please.
Yes, Commissioner McGlohorne. So, as Commissioner Nunley...
Pull your mic up, maybe they can hear it out in video.
As y'all had said earlier, our office February mailed out the notices for the value, the estimated value of property as of January 1 of 2024. That's the estimated, if someone was to sell their property, the estimated value that they could get for it. The tax rates have not been set yet, because the county and the local municipalities have not gone through their budgeting process. And that's a two-step process. So, what we're trying to do in the tax office is determine the value. We're going through the informal appeal process now. We've begun the formal appeal, Board E and R will take up in April. But what we're trying to do is determine the value of the property, get that correct, and then so that y'all will have good valuation estimates and revenues that y'all can base your budget off of, and for the towns as well.
And what's the deadline for appeals?
The deadline to file a informal appeal, we did extend it out to the end of this month, May 31st. We've published that in the State Connected ad, and also, I think, on the Facebook as well. And to file formally, to timely file with any time this year if anyone wants to appeal, will be May 2nd, when the board adjourns for the purpose of taking those appeals. So, anybody that wants to appeal, definitely, if they want us to look at it informally, we're asking to go ahead and get it in. And if not, they want to appeal to the board, it has to happen by May 2nd.
So, March 31st, correct?
March 31st, yes, I'm sorry.
March 31st, and then May 2nd.
And May 2nd, yes.
And I just want to reiterate, because I'm hearing a lot of people wanting to appeal, right? But it's a two-step process, right?
Correct, yes, sir.
So, you're appealing your market rate, but you're not appealing what you're going to be taxed, because what you received in the mail does not indicate what your tax is going to be. And I think that's where the confusion lies in the community. I just want to keep saying it, because you're not... If you appeal and you don't get what you want, it's because the market conditions indicate that that's the value. Doesn't mean that you're going to be run out of your place because the tax, you know, you're going to be taxed at the same rate.
That's correct, yes, sir.
And this board will set the tax rate?
We will.
During the budgeting process.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McGlohorne. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Bergen Williams?
I'd like to say to all the ladies in Pitt County, and they're females especially, that this is national women's month. I am not going to let it go by without saying to all of you males who have a woman in your life, treat her nice. And wish her well, and inspire her to be a part and positive part of this county activities. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I'd just like to take a second and thank all of our county staff. There's a lot of work that goes on in this building and across the county every single day, and we really appreciate all your hard work.
Mr. Manager, I'd like to, one more thing. The ABC Board is accepting requests for funding from nonprofits for the month of March and April. And it just so happened the Boy Scouts appeared today, asked for a request. And we had Dr. Garrett Moore also there, so.
What are you saying?
ABC Board.
The ABC Board is accepting applications for grants, for nonprofit grants, is that what you're saying?
No, not grants, just funding. But it has to be tied to alcohol education.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I offer a motion that we adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much.
Do I hear a second? Don't everybody jump at one time.
I'm already out the door.
Numbered too tight today. I'm going to turn my hand on the yes calling today. Numbered too tight.
Thank you.